Today is May 7th, 2025, and the time is 5:30 PM. I will now call this special meeting of the ISD 191 Board of Education to order. Welcome to those in the audience or watching the recording online. The purpose of this special meeting is to do the following. Prepare for interviews. Conduct our second round interviews of candidates for the superintendent position. Discuss information from the interviews, reference checks, and stakeholder input. Identify a lone finalist and take school board action. Discuss and decide employment contract parameters and negotiations process. Discuss, decide, and schedule the steps necessary for the rest of the hiring process. Before we begin, I would also like to note that this meeting will be recorded and posted on our district's YouTube page, starting on May 8th. The candidate interviews will be made available for public review until the board approves the final superintendent employment contract. After that time period, the candidate interviews will be archived, and only the final selected candidate's interviews will be displayed on our public 191 School Board YouTube channel. Director Chester, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda? So moved. Moved by Director Chester.
Second.
Second by Director Alt. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. The motion carries unanimously. We will now begin this evening's interview process. Before our interview starts, I would like to call our executive search consultant Barb Dorn from MSBA forward to share a few reminders and details for this evening's interviews.
Thank you very much, Chair Wurbe. Congratulations and welcome to round two interviews for superintendent interviews here for 191. I just want to cover two very brief updates for you to make sure that you are comfortable with what's going to happen tonight. First and foremost, the background checks, we do in-depth through Baker U-Banks have all come back, and so Stacy has reviewed those today for your three finalists, and he saw no concerns at all in the background checks. So when you make your motion, if you make a motion tonight contingent on background checks and successful negotiations, I think you can rest easy that the background checks will be clear for any of the three individuals you're about to speak with. Also, we'll do an EMD format similar. You have the form in front of you. You each have three copies. Please make sure you write down the candidate and your own name. I will send you the electronic link during the first interview, so if after the first interview you'd like to input your results, you certainly may do that now that you have a sense of what kind of answers you are looking for from your candidates. Also, in round two, I will be providing to you not only the overview of the total EMD scores, but we do have the same report broken out by board member. So it can be really helpful during deliberations during the second round, perhaps, to see how other people felt about the answers for each candidate. It'll be numbered per question, so if there is agreement, everyone felt that was an exceptional answer, or perhaps someone felt it was disappointing while others felt it was exceptional, that can provide some great fodder for conversation if you need that. So we'll have two forms of the EMD report for you tonight. I'm going to go meet with your first candidate and bring her in shortly, but I want to give you a moment when I leave to decide again in what order you're going to ask the questions. Again, on that form on the left side, you can put names by who is asking what. Please ask the same questions, if possible. Are we going to have seven board members before the interviews conclude, do you know?
Has anybody heard from her?
I've reached out, and I haven't received anything back.
Okay. We'll just go with six at this point.
Okay. We'll proceed, and the questions will be the same for each. So hopefully, the technology is going to work for the presentations, which are the first item on the agenda. Are there any questions for me before I go get your candidate? All right, great. Thank you very much. I'll be right back.
Do we just do the same order? So you, me, go around?
And how do you feel about handshakes for round two? We can skip it. You can skip your introductions, for sure, but do you want handshakes again, or should we simply get rolling?
Yeah, just skip it.
It'll be a long night. So Anna, you're doing number three, and then we'll just go from there?
Yes.
Okay.
Have you done all that cleanup that you need to do on the spreadsheet? Or do you still have more that you would like to do at some point?
I deleted those columns. I don't need to send it tonight or anything, but...
Welcome back, everyone. Before we begin our deliberations, I'd like to call back Barb Dorn from MSBA to provide a few additional details and information.
Thank you, Chair Wurbe. So I have good news and bad news. The good news is you just heard from three outstanding candidates for your position of superintendent. The bad news is you can only hire one. Difficult decision when the pool is this strong, and your pool initially was strong with the 23 applications, and it remains strong with your three finalists. So what you have in front of you is the summary of the EMD form, exceeds meets disappoints. Again, when you look at this, it simply indicates where the board is leaning in terms of more e's is good, more d's is not great, and then you just, from there, discuss and decide what you'd like to do next. This is one tool in your toolbox. It's also broken out by board members. There are people who find it very helpful sometimes to compare and contrast how board members felt about some answers candidates gave. You can certainly turn to that if you need to, but it's just provided for your information. Also, I did hand out earlier today that colored sheet with the highlighted alignment between yourselves and all of your different stakeholder groups. That also summarizes your leadership profile. So right in front of you in one easy document, if you need to dive deeper into who is the best fit for your district, you could take a look at those criteria, both yours and your stakeholder groups, if that aids you in your decision. So are there any questions for me before you begin your deliberations? All right, well, congratulations again. I'll be over here if you need me at any point during the deliberation process. Okay? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Dorn. Up next, we will share some strengths of Becky Broder. Director Flexy, would you please share one to two strengths you saw in this candidate?
Sure. I thought Becky's presentation, not only the presentation, but also her answers to many questions, got into not only the what, but the how. There's a very good command of not only what she wanted to do, what she thought the district needed to do, but how you had actually get that done, and much of that was very much tied to the collaborative and inclusive vision part of our leadership profile.
I agree with that. I think her presentation was good. I liked that it was organized and detailed. I really liked her answer on the facility question. What was that number? Wait for it, 10? I thought she had the most of the three, like, the most detailed, like, actionable answer.
Yep. I liked the interwovenness of referring back to mission, vision, and core values, not only in the presentation, but throughout many of her responses. I also appreciated the facilities approach with trying to get community members and parents involved by touring the facilities. I thought that was a unique approach that was something new.
I also thought her presentation was extremely well laid out. I liked her four sections that she had laid out for her transition plan. I liked the idea of her connecting with recent grads. I thought that was a great idea. Also, that there was a lot of the reference to transparency and collaboration, again, listening and learning. I heard that a lot, which I really appreciate. And I liked when she was talking about addressing enrollment and being bold and proud and sharing her story, being bold, sharing it boldly and proudly, and just it conveyed, you know, authentic investment in how she kind of already was connecting with how students in our district feel proud to be in our district. So those were some things I wanted to highlight.
I agree with comments on the presentation. I also appreciated included in that was a recognition that we might need to be nimble, and as we gather more information, we might need to go back and redraft. The concept of listening, learning, leading, and acting, and also expecting the unexpected in her, in this new role. I really appreciated the response on staff recruitment and retention. She specifically went into retention talking about what is staff telling us about their experience, and kind of went into some different ways that we might be able to honor their experience and possibly create efficiencies, workplace wellness and efficiencies. And then she specifically went into recruiting. You know, we are our best recruiters. She had some good details there. What also spoke to me was in terms of the high-quality equitable education question for each and every student, defining the equity lens, how do we apply it, and what are the action steps? That kind of detail, particularly with equity. And she did a lovely job of mentioning the various diverse groups that live within our district, special ed, multilingual, BIPOC, gender identity. Agree with the comment on the facilities, really the strongest response on the facilities question. And overall, I think what I experienced was that Becky used her time very effectively to get the information, to give us the information that we needed. And also, she was the only one that had a question for us, so she was getting the information that she herself needed as well, just to try to learn a little bit more about who we are.
Yeah, definitely, I think, you know, ditto for, you know, kind of what everybody has talked about already. You know, I guess the one thing that, you know, to add to with her answers was, you know, the question about community members having an issue and feelings, and, you know, her recognition of, you know, sometimes where that's coming from is, well, you didn't do what they wanted, you know, more or less, and, you know, and how to deal with that as far as, you know, finding the places of agreement, and so I just kind of felt like it was, you know, a very effective approach to that, that, okay, you may not always agree on everything, but is there some place that you can come, meeting of the minds, at least somewhere? And I just felt like it was a good, complete answer, and kind of to reiterate, just she did have complete answers, provided information, and answered the questions effectively.
I agree with all of that. I think what struck me the most, really from all of her answers, was she seems to be someone who knows that she does not know everything, and she doesn't have the answer to everything, but she asks the right questions and listens to the people who might know more than she does on certain things, and wants to get those perspectives, not just from staff, but from people in the community, wants to hear from students. And that just kind of came through in many of her answers, that desire to listen and to learn, and I really appreciated hearing about that.
We're going to share the references? Oh, yes. You can go ahead, Director Hume and Director Alt, if you wanted to provide some of what you learned through the reference check.
Happy to do that, yes. I spoke with two board members and two district staff about Becky. The feedback was quite positive, with people stating that she's very much ready to be a district superintendent. Several people in particular pointed out the visionary nature in her leadership style and her success in building strong relationships and being student-focused in all decision-making. She also has tremendous experiences in developing and implementing the budget of her district.
I spoke with one board member. Wasn't quite as successful as Scott at getting responses, unfortunately.
So persuasive.
It's all in the writing. This person that I spoke with affirmed Becky as an ethical leader, honest person, and highly organized and effective in how she leads. Her expertise in equity and strategic direction is significant, this person said. Becky has a deep understanding of and appreciation for equity work and of the community she serves. In terms of budget, Becky has extensive experience taking the lead in the budget process, including when the district made $15 million in cuts.
Okay, thank you, Director Hume and Director Alt. So we will now move on to share strengths of Tyrone Brookins. Director Anderson, will you please share one to two strengths you saw in this candidate?
Sure. I think that, first of all, I liked his answer on equity, that he had to learn that equity is not just about race, and I liked that he was willing to say that was something he had to learn, and that, you know, we're not finished, but also that he acknowledged that there are more, more groups of people out there who deserve an equitable education. Also, I liked his answer to question number eight, handling a situation where a community member feels they haven't been heard. I liked his idea of bringing them into the community and become an active member of this community. How can you help? How can you volunteer? How can you... I liked that tactic. I thought that was good.
I would agree. I highlighted question nine about equity as well, and the focus on getting the individual what they need, so it doesn't define that it's like a canvas blanket for everybody who meets a certain criteria, you know? It's very individualized. And I love the social justice support for equity as well, and the three Rs, relationship, respect, and response. The other thing I liked to, was his approach to the presentation, you know, and I think he gave a little bit more detail than 100 days, which, you know, I appreciate the longer vision as well.
Yeah, I was going to say, I appreciated that he brought up, like, transitioning out of his old role and honoring that, you know, he would need to kind of close out, have closure for that, the prior role. And then I also appreciated, he used the reference a couple times, I believe it was the I-Rod relating to the bases and baseball with the different bases, and what do you like about, what do you like about it? What's not working? Just kind of the whole process, you know, using that as like an evaluation-type tool. And then when he talked about attracting students to the district, and wanting to engage and find out, you know, why students are leaving, and he seemed like genuinely wanting to know and connect with those students to find out and figure out why that's happening.
I appreciated, in the question about the transition, acknowledging, tapping into institutional knowledge that lives here in the district. I also appreciated his comment on, you know, the organization evolving and adapting and being clear on goals, actions, and then evaluate, and then having communications publicly. And the fact in, you know, working with a community member who feels they have not been heard, that he mentioned what doesn't work, and that's, you know, communicating an email, that communicating directly with the person is the best way to engage with them and really make sure that they do get heard. And I think overall, it's very clear that Dr. Brookins has a real passion for education. That was loud and clear.
I think, I think in both his first and second interviews, it really struck me with he is, I don't know what the best way to say it, a visual speaker, you know, with all of the different kinds of examples that he gave, I mean, including the I-Rod thing and, you know, in his presentation, bringing in the flames and the blaze, and, you know, all of these, you know, his garden analogy at, you know, in the first interview, these things. They're a very visual way of communicating ideas, or the examples, analogies that he uses helps to make his point, helps to make them easy to kind of understand and to really get kind of excited about, maybe, you know, and again, kind of communicate them. And just, I think, throughout his answers, kind of what's been brought up already is this really engaging one-on-one, and really bringing people in and talking one-on-one, and everything was kind of building that personal kind of interaction.
Again, yes to all of that. I'll add that I think for me, one of the things that I appreciated was his answer to the question about what support he needed from the board to be successful, and he talked a lot about objectives, communication, collaboration, what gets measured gets done, which I always appreciate a phrase like that, because I think it's very true and very accurate, and I like that he acknowledged that as part of his answer to the question. Also, like Rachel, I like his spark and nurture the flame and blaze analogy. That was very much like, he must have been talking to Aaron or something. So, no, I liked that. That was great.
Yeah, I think the group has covered most of the individual answers that stood out to me, so I won't belabor those, but I think he's very consistent in coming back to a student-centric approach, and it always comes back to, regardless of the answer of the question that he's answering, it comes back to that passion that Director Alt mentioned. I think that ultimately, he understands why we're doing all of these things and why we charge with doing all the things he would do as superintendent.
I started. Oh, okay. I was like, Directors Hume and Director Alt, would you like to provide some of your...
Sure. I'll go, I can go first, yeah. So I spoke with one board member and three district staff about Dr. Brookins. He was described as a very strong partner and an excellent leader with strong communication skills, and as someone who's able to balance data and results with the humans behind that data. He's a strong relationship builder who is eager to learn and puts in the work to understand a challenge and to be able to make good decisions.
I spoke with one board member and a district-level staff member. Both confirmed Dr. Brookins' interpersonal and collaborative skills, as well as the ease with which he understands issues by listening. They also mentioned the notable passion that Dr. Brookins brings to the work.
Okay. All right. Now, next we will share strengths of Latonya Daniels. Director Chester, will you please share one to two strengths you saw in this candidate?
Sure. I really appreciated Dr. Daniels' presentation, especially in elaborating on the five approaches to take in identifying in each bucket, listen, learn, dissect, and act. I thought that was, that helped to really show a very thorough approach, and I loved how it touched, you know...
I started. Oh, okay. I was like... Directors Hume and Director Alt, would you like to provide some of your...
Sure. I'll go, I can go first again. So I spoke with one board member and three district staff about Dr. Brookins. He was described as a very strong partner and an excellent leader with strong communication skills, and as someone who's able to balance data and results with the humans behind that data. He's a strong relationship builder who is eager to learn and puts in the work to understand a challenge and to be able to make good decisions.
I spoke with one board member and a district-level staff member. Both confirmed Dr. Brookins' interpersonal and collaborative skills, as well as the ease with which he understands issues by listening. They also mentioned the notable passion that Dr. Brookins brings to the work.
All right. Now, next we will share strengths of Latonya Daniels. Director Chester, will you please share one to two strengths you saw in this candidate?
Sure.
I really appreciated Dr. Daniels' presentation, especially in elaborating on the five approaches to take in identifying in each bucket, listen, learn, dissect, and act. I thought that was, that helped to really show a very thorough approach, and I loved how it touched, you know, prioritizing teaching and learning first, including operations and management, and then ending with community partnerships and engagement. I thought that was incredibly strong. The other thing I appreciated too was her approach, I mean, her approach to... Hold on, I had a thought. Where did it go? I can't remember which question it was. It was something, oh, I think, yeah, okay. It was addressing the fluctuating enrollment, because it's like, okay, what's outside of our control, which is low birth rates, which we already know. What's within our control? You know, what's the spread in and what's the spread out? What's, you know, where are those buckets? And then making sure it's not our reason. I like that. And then like, being able to discern what that means.
I was also extremely impressed with her presentation. I thought it was extremely detailed, just everything that she outlined and just, like, it was very intentional. Like, there was, she put a lot of thought into each bucket that she created and very much thought out how she planned to do all these things. And touched on every single thing, I believe, that, you know, is a priority in the district. I also felt like when she was discussing, let's see, trying to figure out which question it was. Okay, so when she was discussing providing high-quality equitable education and removing the barriers and just the, the way she went about identifying the issues that she did in her prior district with the enrollment in the AP classes, and just having that mindset of something where you're curious about something and why it's a challenge in your district, and then just taking that lead to go and figure out and do something about it. I was very impressed with having that sort of initiative and caring to be that, have that foresight and just be able to, you know, charge ahead and make that change to do something like that. So I found that very impressive.
Agree on the presentation comments that have already been made. Really impressed with the level of detail and clarity that came out of that detail. I appreciated that she made the statement that she's an instructional leader, hands And then in terms of the community conversation, you know, using history to learn from bad history and then learn from that, and that today is a new day. I thought that was a really beautiful way to encompass approaching history and growth at the same time. And her analysis of who the new teachers are as Gen Z was really insightful. I liked that. Oh, yes. And just very simply stated when she, you know, boils down equity to access, support, and success. That's just a really clear way of putting it out there and drawing the line in the sand.
You know, definitely agree with all the comments concerning the presentation. One of the things, as far as, you know, how to handle the transition and, you know, challenges, she stated one, that, you know, that, hey, this is the piece that I'll have probably the biggest challenge with, but she also provided, this is how I'm going to deal with it, you know, this is who I will talk to about it. So it wasn't just, oh, I don't know what I'm gonna do, you know? She actually, you know, had an action step for it, which I definitely appreciated, that honesty. And kind of to go along with some of the, you know, what's been commented already for her answer about the high-quality equitable education, you know, her answer with, you know, removing the barriers and the access, support, success, that's a transferable kind of process or approach, you know, to not just that issue, it's something that could be used in other kinds of situations and challenges that we might encounter. And lastly, I'll just say, I really liked her comment about with the finances and facility needs and things that, well, when you've been fiscally responsible in the past, you know, they're gonna trust you with that money then. So I really liked that comment, as far as recognizing, you know, as a way to communicate, why should you trust us with, you know, additional monies?
All right. Again, I find myself agreeing with everything that's been said so far. I have two additional comments that I don't think have been explicitly stated, so I will do that. One, during the question about the transition that came after the presentation, and she made the comment that all change begins with loss, which I really appreciated, because she talked about the relationships that Dr. Battle has made over the last six years, the impact she has had, and acknowledged that as a new superintendent, that's gonna be part of the legacy that she's gonna be building on. So I really appreciated hearing her say that during her answer. And then the other one that I wanted to mention, oh, was the one around, was whichever question was around enrollment. And not only did she answer the question, but she was able to provide a specific example of when she improved the enrollment numbers at a school where she worked in one of her previous positions. So I liked that answer a lot also. So.
Yeah, I, like others, really appreciated the combination of how she defined equality, and then also had a very strong example of making a major difference and finding somewhere where you could. Also stood out the part of her answer about staff retention, being that retention comes down to support and workload, which is a great summary of a rather complex issue. But if you're gonna boil it down to, do you feel you're able to make a difference and give your best? Those are the two things that are going to matter. So I thought that resonated quite a bit.
Well, I don't like going last. Because you stole all my answers. I mean, really, I agree with everything that's been said. That's not me. I loved her presentation for the same reasons you had mentioned specifically. I loved the all change begins with loss comment. I loved that she admitted her areas of growth and had a plan on how to tackle those. The, looking at what the new generation of teachers are looking for to retain the... I mean, all of her answers were... I really, I think this kind of goes down to like, her vibe, right? That she's a human-centered leader. And there's a lot of technical things that need to happen, but that it's all gonna happen within the lens of we are all human first, and I really appreciate that. And that might be reflective of my own experience, but I liked it anyway. Also, I like that she talks about wanting to spread the good news about the district, that we are, we have good news to spread. I like that.
Okay. Director Hume, Director Alt, wanna share your...
I'll go first again. So I spoke with one board member and three district staff about Dr. Daniels. She was described as someone who is not afraid to surround herself with people whose strengths complement each other. She has clear expectations for her staff, but does not micromanage them and does hold them accountable for their work. She was also described as a people person and a relationship builder, while being someone who uses data appropriately to make good decisions and recommendations for strengthening the district.
I again spoke with one board member. This person shared Dr. Daniel's strength in communication, onboarding new staff, and in her teaching and learning oversight.
Thank you. So... So we will now deliberate. I don't know if I should start, but, I mean, does anyone else wanna start?
I don't know how this works.
Well, I think we are faced with a very tough challenge here, because I feel like there's some two front-runners here. I feel strongly about a candidate. I'll just, I'll share with you that I feel very strongly about Dr. Daniels. She said some very insightful things. I feel like she would bring some, she would bring some good... I'm trying to think of my words to say. It's late and it's hard to find the words. I want to say that, convey what I'm trying, what I want. I feel like she has qualities that we are looking for in our district. She just came across as like, really, you know, I like the, when she talked about using the data for, to make, you know, for outcomes. And I feel like she would just use that to make some necessary changes, you know, needed changes that, you know, for the better. So anyone else is welcome to share what their thoughts are.
So you started by saying you think we have two strong finalists. Can we make sure we're all on the same page on who those two might be?
Becky. Becky and Rebecca.
Those would be my top two as well.
Yes.
Likewise.
Begin to make some movement.
We haven't heard from Rachel. Yeah, okay.
She's internally nodding.
Being completely honest, though, it's a coin flip in my head about which one, because I think they both have so many strengths and different strengths. That's kind of where I'm struggling, that I have a strong opinion that either of them could be the right person. I'm not quite ready to say, yes, definitely, this is the one over that one yet.
And I tend, I'm in a similar place. The one thing for me that stands out with Becky is the breadth of her experience in terms of kind of walking in the shoes that we're looking to fill, but as an assistant superintendent in a large district. You know, the budget conversation was something that this board hadn't necessarily identified as, you know, one of our top traits, but our community did. So I feel like we need to honor that. But between, and between the two of them, we have two wonderful leaders that are collaborative, inclusive, organized, and with extensive experience in education.
I'm kind of in the same place, where I think there's two great potential hires between both of them. Also, I'll step back and say, I think the board did a great service to the district and the community by bringing three back for tonight. I'm not trying to win it down to two last time. I think that was, that was helpful, which I think one takeaway for me leads to Becky was the most consistent across the board. If I look at the first interview, look at the second interview, and the time in between, going through the application materials, going through the reference letters, all of those things. For me, I think all three of them were actually very strong. But I think Becky aced both interviews, and the other two candidates were sort of, one with the first interview, the other in the second interview stood out to me.
Interesting.
That's interesting.
That's not my experience, but I appreciate yours. I mean, just as far as, between the first and second, I, because I felt like there was more than one of them that had strong first and second interviews. However, I do think, I know we said this last time, but I'm gonna bring it up again, I really like that Dr. Daniels has experience in every level of job experience through a district, from being a paraprofessional up to assistant superintendent. That, I think that from a staffing point of view and from a parent point of view, it feels like this might be a leader who will understand all of the, all of the jobs that they are leading. And that seems like an important thing.
Yep, I agree with that as well. I also think Dr. Daniels' approach and extensive experience in terms of onboarding staff would lead to more, stronger retention of our staff. And again, the appreciation of and perspective of addressing enrollment, you know? And I really valued that she knows her strengths, and she also knows the areas of improvement and has a plan for how she needs to grow in that area. I thought that was incredibly thorough, because it's, you can, you know, everybody can say, I'm great at everything, you know? But to be able to admit that you still have areas of growth and learning, and you know what those are, and that you're going, and that you're being intentional about expressing those, is a high value for me.
Kind of, we already did agree with Scott said, you know, just that we've got excellent candidates, you know, that I don't think we're, we would lose with either one. It's what do we, you know, who do we think fits, you know, the criteria and the profile that we're really looking for? And I think, you know, both of them really hit, you know, pretty much all of these. You know, their presentations were both excellent. They clearly have, you know, done their research and, you know, are, have done what they can to be familiar with the district so that they can kind of hit the ground running as much as possible, you know, should they be selected. I do appreciate it. It does seem like, you know, Becky has, would come in with a little bit more for the budget kind of side of it. But, you know, again, that Latonya has a plan for, you know, you leverage off people's, whose strength that is. And so I am kind of similar to Scott, where I could go either way. I really could. I think they both would bring a lot to the district.
So I'll just say a few more things. I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'll keep talking about it. I'll keep stating my case.
That's why we're here.
And Anna also moderating conversation too will be helpful.
Yes. So, I mean, when I, when I look at this, and I just want to acknowledge, you know, they're just not, you know, I don't think it's, it's fine if you're gonna bring in somebody that may not check all the boxes, that that could just be not, it's not feasible. But we're looking for somebody that checks off most of them. Most of them. Or as many, as many that are, I would say... Because since we all, we all align. Some of the top things, I mean, are honesty and ethical and accountable leadership. I, I think the, the difficulty is, is that you will find these things in both of them. So how do you weigh, you know, who has. More of the strengths and, and I don't know, for, and like I, I said, I just feel like. When you took, when you talk about somebody that's coming in and already saying, they, they look at something that they, they identify as an issue and they can say. I, I've identified, like they, they can come into our district and be like, hmm, maybe this isn't working. Maybe we need to do that. I want somebody that's going to look at our district and think. That's a problem. How do we fix it? And I've seen in. Dr. Daniels has already given an example of that. I want to see that happen in our district. I want somebody that's going to come in and say, I, I see that as a problem. I want to fix it. I mean, we already know we've had certain issues with graduation rates and things like that. And if somebody comes in and they're like, hey, I, I see a problem here. I want to go in and dive in and fix it. I see her doing that.
I definitely do. My mind also goes to what we know we'll be working on in the next four to six years where this board will, maybe not us specifically. You know, we've got facilities. We know that budget is going to be a, a challenge. I agree with you, Anna, that, you know. The instructional side is, is our raison d'etre. And I think, given. What our work is, is known to be. We would put ourselves in really good footing with someone that has that extensive experience with budget and. And also with the, the facilities conversations, the project around. Drawing, redrawing boundaries and closing the school. That's a huge undertaking in a large school district. I personally, based on my, my, my experience, having worked with two superintendents who came in. With. Experience with budget, but not with that macro level of budget. It would. I value having someone that does have that macro level of experience. Because it does take time and I don't know, I don't know that we have time to wait in terms of serving our students with the money that, that, well. With the funding being what it is.
So, I mean, in a way, I think kind of what I'm hearing is without the budget piece, you can't do the line piece. In a way, you have to be able to follow along and, and figure out how to do it.
As someone who sits at a leadership level in an organizations, I seldomly find anybody who's truly an expert in finance. Regardless of the level of somebody's a new CEO, somebody's a new executive director, even board members have no or limited knowledge of what it truly means to know finance. And so I don't want to hone that as a limitation because if you're comparing size of district to Richfield to that of Anoka Henepin, which is like a. It's two counties. Richfield is part of Henepin County.
Have more IEPs than we have students.
You know, so, so in, in that perspective, yes, the, the difference of maybe the experience, but maybe not. I still think that there's transferable skill in finance that Dr. Daniel still displayed and she acknowledged in terms of. The high school that she oversaw, you know, and working with establishing that budget for that particular school or, you know, multiple programs. In terms of facilities, she was the only one who called out in the tours that she could see why facilities was a priority. So she saw something coming into the building that we didn't articulate. So. Did maybe her approach to responding to that question in which I was kind of really reading the question and I could see how it could be interpreted different ways. And so that's why I'm not going to lean heavy on, on how that response was taken because of that.
And I, I have to agree, the way that question was worded. We, I, I felt we got different answers, like that question pointed to different answers than we, than we might have expected.
Right, because when I was hearing the responses, some of them is like, well, how do you go after a levy referendum? Well, yeah. You know, versus how are you going to, you know, address a facilities plan?
Right.
I don't think that was really articulated in that question to be very fair for all three candidates. So I almost want to toss that because it didn't get to what we wanted.
Well, I think that you're kind of coming back to, you know, the first interview with some of.
Yes. The, the boundary change, like understanding the significance of what it takes to change boundaries in a behemoth. Right? We, we know how difficult that, that is here, so, and, and managing that kind of project.
I don't think just because somebody necessarily hasn't done something doesn't mean they aren't good at it.
I'm not saying that they haven't. I'm just saying there, there are nuances of experience and having, like having more. More precise. Experience at the district level with a large budget. Isn't necessar, I'm not saying it's, it's, it's different than having school level budget experience. It's not that the experience isn't there. It's just a nuance.
It, it changes the, the learning curve. The learning curve isn't quite as steep if you've had more of those types of experiences. Now, you may find that, who knows how it'll play out, but I think that's going into it because that's kind of what I've been pondering also is. Knowing that Becky definitely has, seems to have more direct budget development and management and implementation experience. I think that flattens the learning curve a bit for her if we go in that direction. And that, as you were saying, given some of the needs that we know we're going to have to address in the coming years. I think is important because she'd be able to jump in and hit the ground running, maybe just a smidge faster than Latanya.
And I think certainly appreciate Director Chester's points on, there's not that much finance expertise necessarily in these fields, but. But I also think that's a kind of a counterpoint and maybe it's from working in a financial institution, but there are people who do. And if you have that chance to add them and they bring that to the table, that's a big add.
It is, however. So much of the work is human relations. And I mean, we talk about retaining families in our district and upping our enrollment, like so much of that is. Appealing to human experience and not to say, and not saying that Becky doesn't have that. I'm just, because the other side of the coin, I guess. And, I mean, retaining teachers and like our kids and, and their social emotional learning, like all of these questions that we've asked and all of these things that our community seems to care about. You can learn how to, how to do a budget, right? And you have support on how to do that. But that human relation and, and building relationships. Is, there's, there's something natural ability, some natural ability there that. Is harder to learn, if that makes sense. So I don't know.
And you have long terms, you have long-term facility maintenance and you have budget, you have people that support you for that, those other things. That's something that's there already. You can't get that from somebody else. You either have it or you don't. So. I just, there's so many things, I, so many qualities I saw in Dr. Daniels that I just felt like, you know, that's what, that's, I don't know, it just, I'm, I'm just going to say my gut says. That's what, that's her. I'm sorry. I, I, that's what I feel. I feel like she's who we need and that's. That's, I'm not, I'm not budgeting. That's me. I'm sorry.
I mean, speaking as one of seven, I completely agree with you. I think ending with that she's a, you know, she goes by human first then role and that, that doesn't. Negate the fact that she holds high expectations with, with accountability and care. And I think that, that, you know, so that, that high expectations could be not only of her staff, her team, the teachers, her students. It, I think that sets a precedent that, that I heard more loudly from her than the other candidate.
I agree with that. And I agree, there is an element of your, your gut feeling. For, for people who make decisions based on intuition.
I just want to add. We've talked a lot about being a relationship builder in the last couple of minutes, specifically around Latanya, but my sense from her answers and from the references I got. Is that Becky is also very much a relationship person, a relationship builder. So I just want us to, you know, that it's possible that she has both the relationship piece and the budgeting piece and, and if we were to go that direction.
And I don't disagree with that. I just. I don't know. Sometimes it's, it's just how somebody conveys something when they're speaking. I don't know. And just from the way Latanya, Dr. Daniels, the way, it was just her style, the way she spoke, the things she said, how she said it, the examples she used. All of those things, those, the things. I don't know how else to say it.
She checked all the boxes for you.
Yes.
And I also appreciated that. I mean, they both gave great answers in both interviews. The reason my gut is telling me that Becky is the right choice, as I've already, reasons already stated. And to Scott's point, relatable, approachable, you know, a listener that leans in, you know, she, she shared in both interviews that. That she needs to listen and learn before she does anything. And. That meant a lot to me. She also talked about accountability too. I could go back and find it, but.
Yeah, she did. I wrote that down as well. In the question four, she said something along the lines of. Seeking out help when she needs it.
Yeah, yeah.
I think it's important to just remind ourselves that we're choosing between two goods. And.
Absolutely.
We are and.
It's okay.
Two excellence.
I would say.
And I, and, and, and because both in my mind bring, you know, granted, Latanya labeled it differently. She labeled it, labeled it as a human leader. I could hear in both of them what we're looking for. As a board and based on our community input. The budget is, is just the, the, the one thing that kind of ticks it a little higher for me because. It does make a difference if you're coming into that role and you have to take time to learn. Yes, it can be learned, to your point, can definitely be learned. I would love to be able to work with someone that already has that experience.
My gut tells me that for our students and our families. Latanya is the person.
Yep.
And for our staff.
Yep. Yep. I think when I look about our vision, like if we talk about our. Our vision, our strategic plan. I, I don't, she just, I feel like she would come in and she would enforce that vision and like add to it. Like, I just. I feel like that she's got ideas. She's got things that she, you know, I think she would actually, she would make change. She would create change. I'm not saying that Becky wouldn't, but I just, I don't, Latanya had examples of how she created like different student outcomes and that said, that was important. I mean, that at the end of the day, we're serving students.
I will say, when we first got all of the applications several weeks ago at this point, whenever that was. Latanya's was one of the first ones that jumped out at me and I'm like, the first one, might've been the first one that I made a note that. This is someone like look closer, look more closely at this, at this application. So it was definitely one that even from the beginning made a strong first impression on me. So do the others, but that one I remember specifically because what I remember is. How she was using data to tell her story and I figured it was the cover letter, the resume, whatever, something, but I appreciate that. And that came across several times in her comments tonight and last week when we met with her. So that's definitely something that, like finding that balance between, as we've talked about many times, the data and the humans that are, that produce that data or the result of that data. Yeah.
I'm just going to. Say something.
Don't be scared.
Because this could be on either side. Because I, I feel with approaching this, we're making a hiring decision, you know. And. A bias toward hiring someone that is like you. That you. Relate to or is most like you. And just being aware of that very natural bias and trying, and, and making efforts to take that out. And, and I just say that in terms of either candidate that, and, and that's where I'm also, you know, with efforts to. Take that out, you know, I'm, I am so on the fence with, because I think objectively, at least from my. Perspective objectively, they both have very significant strengths that they would break. Really just. Trying to recognize and take that out as far as. You know, if that at all helps to inform the conversation.
I feel like when I. For every point that I think of, I'm like, oh yeah, that person said that too. Right? Like, I mean, they really are, and it's like not helpful. I, I know. They really are so close. I keep thinking about all of the feedback I have gotten. I keep thinking about all of the feedback I have gotten, just in general, even before I ran for the board, right? From staff, from parents, you know, what do they want the district to do? What kind of changes do they want them to make? I see a lot of that, I keep going, oh yeah, like, Latonya really has a lot of those things that people wanna see. But, you know, Becky kinda does too, and you know, and I just keep going back. And so, like, I don't know, for me, and maybe this is the equivalent to my gut says, but I feel more excited when I think about choosing Latonya. That her as a leader excites me, whereas for Becky, even though it checks all the boxes, for whatever reason, I think that is a good choice. And doesn't feel like, yes, and I'm excited to make it, if that makes sense. I don't.
It's hard to. I mean, I, and I don't wanna, this is, this is hard decision, you know? It is, it's very hard. And it's hard to like try and pick one person over another person and not try, you know, don't wanna make the other person feel bad and. But, you know, the, the thing is, I don't wanna get caught in this like, I mean, if you're, you're gonna say, well, the only reason I'm picking Becky is because she has more experience with the budget. I, I just, I'm sorry, I can't do that. I'm, that's, to me, not, it's not right.
So how about if we look at their responses from the first interview and make a comparison? Use data.
Yeah, cuz.
I could go with that.
I would agree.
It might be helpful. Cause I did happen to.
I don't, like personally, like, like I said, I'm on the fence either way, but I don't, I'm not looking at it as that budget thing as the differentiator necessarily, or like, I think they're very equal on all of the other things, so then the budget piece can be a deciding factor. And it's not because of the budget experience that I would lean that way potentially. It's because the other things match up.
All other things being equal, that's like the tiebreaker, essentially.
So I was geeky enough to create a spreadsheet.
Shocker.
Of course you were.
If you want, we can go through their responses in the first interview, if that would be helpful. I can't do it tonight, cuz.
I don't think it's gonna sway my brain.
It's not gonna sway mine either.
Frankly, and, and frankly, I think Latonya was my frontrunner after the first interview.
She was my frontrunner after the first.
I mean, just something with the, with the presentation, it was like almost instant for me based off of the other interviews. And, and then even prior to that, doing the homework before the top five was presented to us. When I created my own personal top five, she was definitely in the top two. So, and that was just me.
Would it be helpful for the others? I don't know.
I, I would, I would like to do that. Cause I would like us to get to a point where we're all in agreement.
I would too. Yeah, I would too.
I think that's really important.
And the data is the only way.
Yep.
Really, and, and this, right?
Yep.
Okay, so, let me make sure I'm looking at the right person. Okay.
Just to clarify though, Barb, this, this doesn't have to be unanimous decision.
No, it doesn't.
It's helpful if it is.
It's helpful, sure.
I think it's very important if at all possible.
For a new superintendent to come in, it would be very important that it's.
I think we need to go through the process until we're all there, one way or the other.
Okay, so one of the responses got deleted.
I'll stay on that.
Okay, so, balance.
I have a very long day tomorrow, so.
Balance, visibility, accessibility, administrative responsibility, that was the first question. Latonya, technology, if it's a priority, it is scheduled. She talked about stopping and dropping, be visible, have colleagues who can support her. Becky's, the only note I have is principals must have soup support, I must have, okay. The next one is collaborate and ensure access to quality learning and support services.
Oh, can we go back to the?
Yeah.
Collaboration one, cuz I had also written that one of the things that she did as part of a process for, in her example, was collaborating with the city through, through that process. It was around a name change, building name change or something?
Yep. Becky, clear definition of how quality is defined, show up as a listener, learning collaborator. Tier one is our promise to our students, consolidated transition program into one, building with staff and family input and then the celebrations afterward. No, wait, that's, yeah. And then Latonya, strategic plan is her guide with values, unpack goals with teachers, understand our metrics. Lean on instructional leaders to create strategies that execute our priorities. Biweekly principal meetings, input data, we are only as good as the data we gather. No mention, oh, I won't say that, sorry. Communicate and align vision and goals with team stakeholders and board members. Transparent, timely, this is Becky, transparent, timely communication, get ahead with communications and in a predictable pattern, good system of communications for emergencies so families know who to go to. Latonya talked about vision and mission, leverage every platform to reiterate this work. Clear expectations with staff, newsletters, weekly meetings. Clarity reduces confusion was a statement. How do we improve educational experiences for the typically underserved students? Becky talked about MTSS and advancing access via equity. Each student has what they need to engage and succeed. Equity decision-making protocols. And there was discussion about what voices are missing, so we aren't further marginalizing. And she talked about her equity commitment as a lifelong learner. Latonya, experience, experiences, experiences influence outcomes, sorry. Focus on quantitative data. What's the why, what's under the, why, why is the quantitative, quantitative data the way it is? And what's under the surface? She talked about having conversations with students, with people who work with the, with our underserved students. Create a plan to address it and recruit students into rigor was another comment. Communicate with board, staff, students, families in a transparent, honest manner. The only, Becky, the only, that's the only way I know how to do it, show I'm reliable. And then she talked about relationships, listening and learning time. Latonya, weekly communicate, she talked about weekly communication to the board to share significant events and emergencies as they arrive. Talked about a staff newsletter with purpose, monthly. Talked about students being partners in our work. Newsletter, a student newsletter, ask questions. And then there was a comment about existing with purpose. What happens if the board challenges your recommendation? Have a trusting, respectful, Becky, have a trustful, respectful relationship. Do what is best for the community. She's worked with board before. And she would ask, what's your concern, what ideas do you have? Steer back to the vision with students at the center, we all want the same thing. Latonya, listen to my bosses, give you what you need to support the recommendation. Share information, wait or abandon. And then there was a comment about partnership. What if you recognize staff is struggling? Becky, I've done this work before with teachers, principals and district. Talked about predictable and clear expectations, are you clear on our expectations? Build a shared understanding, define barriers to success. She would ask, how can I support you? We might not agree, but you must understand my expectations. Latonya talked about assistant superintendent was, was coach and mentor. Direct reports share their hurdles, plan, do, study, act. Have principals in classrooms with purpose. Voice of the principal is important, is the improvement plan fair? There was a comment about accountability with the principals, create clarity and reduce confu- oh, that was Latonya, I'm sorry. Wait, yes, did I say that? I did, okay, I'm sorry.
I'm not gonna lie, I'm lost.
Okay, okay. Create clarity and reduce confusion. Balance needs of special populations. Becky talked about each student equally, equaling the full spectrum of needs. Talked about multi-lerner, special ed, gifted and talented. It can be a challenge to support all those needs. Strategic problem solver with principals, then allow autonomy. High expectations for all students. Tier one is our promise plus additional support. And she was able to make a shift without additional budget. Latonya, align teaching and learning with special programs, oh, she aligned, sorry, teaching and learning with special programs, created a practice profile. Look for us for all students served, strong core instruction and PD for co-teaching model. Presence and actions, oh, were, an, an example in which presence and actions were crucial to building trust and rapport. Becky, the boundary change in middle school. Make a plan of action to improve process which includes input. Explain to the board why this will be different and offer choice where possible. Latonya talked about a change in role, must build trust and rapport with new colleagues. Can't be in an ivory tower. District provide support to, must provide support to teachers, teachers, share honest voice. And when you're new in, in a role, demonstrate that people are heard. And then be transformational. Be transparent around what worked and what is expected, presence with purpose. Stop. Okay. Budget. Becky talked about healthy fund balance, aligned with board priorities with student, aligned board priorities with student priorities. Design process was inclusive, representative and transparent. Provided clear and timely communications, collaborated with finance, A and I, achievement and integration, title and staffing. Latonya, understand the district priorities as part of the process. Looked at student enrollment, engaged the board and principals, presented to instructional learning staff. And that was it. Accountability. Accountability, Becky, accountability begins with clarity, being present. Do people understand mission, vision, know the way, show the way, go the way, grow the way. Work alongside leader, hands-on, each principal works with their leadership team. Coaching and coaching. Reduced referrals, behavior referrals from 5,000 to 600. Latonya, have clear expectations and directions as well as autonomy, how do we get there? Be clear on outcome and goal, meet with team weekly to align work to strategies. What barriers exist? And then Latonya provides coaching. What doesn't work, avoiding conflict and not saying what isn't working. And that's what I had. And what the board was looking for in specialized skills. Act with honest, that aligned with the community, acts with honesty and in an ethical manner with the school board, staff and community. Develops trust and works collaboratively with diverse groups and communities. Strong communicator with proven abilities in human relations. Visible and accessible to the school board, staff, students, parents and community.
Both of them check all of those boxes.
Correct.
There's no doubt about that.
Yes, Doc.
Where sort of I'm at at this point, I would, to some of the previous comments, agree with sort of the vibe comments and the energy and the excitement. There was a portion of Latonya's interview where I was thinking in my head, this is the next superintendent for 191. Definitely felt that, see the excitement comment as well of something like that. So I was starting from that point and then did not want to just go based on that vibe and that feeling. And wanted to give the analytical part of my brain 50% of the decision as well to look into that and see if that would change it. And I think at this point, I'm not seeing anything to change that perspective. I think, I think the budget thing is still a key thing, but I think we do have a very strong finance team in-house that can aid with that change, so. I would have no issue with.
Dr. Daniels?
Going forward with Dr. Daniels.
All right.
Hey, over there.
Sorry. He's killing me.
Let's check on you.
She's so excited.
Just no more lollipop sounds.
So far past, so far past with it.
Okay.
And that kinda goes to something that, you know, as we're going through this discussion and, you know, reviewing the comments and things that is kind of, you know, coming to mind is, I mean, there is to say that maybe she wouldn't, you know, that that could then be something to inform her as far as her leadership team to help to balance out those, those skills that she can be sure that she has the network, you know, the support there that, that has those kinds of budget expertise, you know, you know, to balance as needed, you know, because again, yes, there's a learning curve, but, you know, okay, she'll learn it.
I think, I'm looking at the leadership profile, I know I'm looking at the leadership profile. And the first bullet point, there, the first part of it is highlighted in green. Below that, it says, effectively delegates while ensuring accountability, cultivating trust to create. trust and creating and maintaining a culture of transparency. I'd say both candidates have that, but I would also say it came through more explicitly in the references I got for Dr. Daniels than for Becky. I think, I don't know if every reference said that, but it definitely came up in more than one, that she is someone who very much holds her staff accountable while also not micromanaging them and giving them the ability to do their job and then holding them accountable when there's an issue. And I think that's something that is, I mean, it's the first thing on the list, so I think that's a really important thing to also consider at this point in the evening.
And that's very helpful to know because we know accountability is, is really important. And we have two very good candidates. I trust the joy. I trust the joy. I don't, I don't, I don't think we can go wrong with either. So yes, I support Latonya.
Okay, everybody.
Can I make a motion?
Wait, I'm sorry.
Oh, not yet.
We have to, we have to radio, yeah.
I'm sorry, that's why.
She's like, she's silently nodding.
She's silently nodding.
I would have already stated it.
She did. But to reiterate kind of what your, your comment is, you know, I was, it was in my mind as far when, when you were reading the references and everything about the, the comments for Latonya about the accountability and that, that definitely was something that obviously you had said, you know, pretty much right up front and, and that that must have been something that, that you heard quite often was number one, one of, one of the top things. I mean, I, I would, as, as I kind of said, I would support either one and everyone has good points and so absolutely, for the time, Dr. Daniels.
Okay. So I feel like we've reached consensus here. Are we all in agreement?
Well, can I make a motion?
We all said we do.
Let's have some motions.
Let's make it all official.
Okay, all right.
I, may, may I?
Yes, sorry, go ahead.
I would like to make a motion that we extend an offer to Dr. Latonya Daniels to be the next superintendent of Independent School District 191, pending background check and contract negotiations and any other fine print that I may have forgotten to say.
I second.
All right. So this, you guys went off script. Okay.
We did it without a script, it was so impressive.
Yes. Okay, so moved by Director Hume, seconded by Director Alt. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Nay. The motion carries unanimously.
We did it.
I think you all need to high five or something.
Thank you, everyone.
Five minute recess.
Okay.
If we could go out in the hallway, we need to call her and report back.
Yes.
Okay, so all of us need to go out?
No, just.
Just you.
We need to go with her and we will wait for you.
Okay.
We will sit here and wait.
Okay, so. Okay, so we are taking a brief recess.
Taking a, yes. Good clarification.
What if after all that she's declined?
Oh my gosh, I would be really mad.
Well, we have a great, oh. We had another motion about a second choice or do we just?
I say after all that.
Let's make a new motion. All right, well, we'll cross that bridge.
She was beyond dilated.
Yay. Now she can have breakfast at Johnson's.
When she wants to meet with us individually.
At this time, at this time, I would like to call Barb Dorn from the Minnesota School Board Association, executive search team to come forward and walk us through our next steps in the process.
First and foremost, congratulations. That was a, an excellent discussion, extremely thoughtful and deliberative and honest and thorough. So I just can't thank you enough for the work that this board has done. It's a very important job you have and you did it extraordinarily well. So thank you for that and for your service to the students in 191. A couple of housekeeping items. I will contact the other two candidates this evening and let them know the decision the board made. I'll also send a press release shortly to Sarah and copy your word on it so that can be released per your district's communications protocols. Do remember to turn in your notes, please. All notes.
They're in a big pile on your desk.
We still need Anna's.
Are they on my desk?
Except for Anna's.
Oh, in the middle.
On top of your computer is.
That's my, oh.
That's our big pile of stuff we collected while you were gone.
We're missing one.
I'll be giving everything to Sarah. I'll give everything to Sarah to share with Stacy.
Okay.
So your notes on the applications, your notes on the interviews, your EMD forms, all get turned in. Yes.
I forgot to bring the ones from last week.
Bring them in at some point to the district office.
We'll be here tomorrow night.
Will we be here tomorrow?
I won't be.
Actually, she won't.
I will not be. I will, I will, I will bring it Friday.
Turn them in eventually because you have data retention policies for private personnel data and they're different for the people that you didn't interview and the people you interviewed and the one you hired. It's different, so.
For the reference calling, should I just email that straight to Stacy or to Sarah?
You could do that.
Okay.
Sure, that works. I do want to take a moment to thank Sarah. She did a tremendous job. There's a lot of internal coordination and she was a terrific point person for me, so I really appreciate her work and, and let you know that she did a phenomenal job. I will be sending you a survey tomorrow if you are willing. We're always trying to continually improve what we do and so I'll have a survey. It takes about two minutes to fill it out. If any of you have thoughts on the process that you went through for the superintendent search, we'd appreciate hearing that. And I'm going to include Sarah on that as well. So all board members and Sarah, if you have some time in the next week or two to fill that out, that would be deeply appreciated by all of us at MSBA. Our role is complete in your search process, so I will go stage left for a while, or is it stage right, when you exit? Whatever side I'm going to exit to. I am going to exit.
That'd be stage left.
That'd be stage left. So I will exit, but it's been a true pleasure working with all of you for this whole process. It's a lot of work and you did a tremendous job again. I will be back though for the transition workshop. I'll be reaching out this fall to schedule that, to talk about expectations for that first year, performance evaluation, metrics, process, whatever you'd like to adopt with your new superintendent. So I will be back sometime in the fall, but in the meantime, you have my contact information. I would encourage you to use it if you think of anything else you might need to know or if MSBA can assist.
I have a question.
Yes.
And I think this is the only time that we would have the opportunity to discuss it. And Barb, with your expertise and guidance, if this is a bad idea, please feel free to shoot it down. In terms of the contract, I wasn't able to find it, but I believe there has been, there have been instances in which we have offered an allowance if the superintendent wants to actually move within 191 boundaries, if we believe that that's important, if that's something that can be done. I just wanted to throw it out there for people to consider.
I thought that was in her, Dr. Battle's original contract. I remember talking about it.
It was, oh yeah, it was, it was in.
Yeah, I think it was in the original one.
And she, she never, she never moved.
I feel like that was in her original contract.
But it wasn't a requirement or mandatory.
No, it's not requirement, no.
It's not, we can't make it a requirement.
Yeah, right, exactly.
Yeah.
But I think it was something that was written in.
So if it's, if, if it's possible, is that something, is that something that we want to offer?
I'm not opposed to offering it, I mean.
Well, the contract's already written up and it's going to be sent tomorrow.
Well, it could be changed.
Sure, but, you know, she can come back and say, I want this and this or whatever. She can, you know, if there's something in the contract, she, she wants to.
I guess the question is, do we want to offer that?
Okay. But if it's already there.
Is in Dr. Battle's contract that it's in this one? Because it can be basically the same.
Well, we should be sure and double check that before sending her contract tomorrow.
I don't know if it was built into, it wasn't built into the second contract we did because.
No, because we knew.
We knew already.
Yeah.
So I don't know if, if we were facing the contract of, of the original one.
And that was why there were questions because.
I'm going to let you discuss it and work on the press release.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thanks, Barb.
I'm just pulling up her contract.
Is it something that we have to have proposed in the contract right now or is it something that you can verbally say if that's something of interest, it'd be something we could amend?
Right.
Like send her the contract and say, we had this conversation. If that's.
Oh, yeah, that's what you're saying.
Negotiating point.
I can ask, I can just call Stacy tomorrow and I can say, hey, we talked about this. Is it something, you know, we can tell her, we can add if she wants it?
Well, you don't have to ask him. It's, we can just decide ourselves because it was part of Dr. Battle's contract.
But doesn't, I thought she lived over here anyway.
No, Dr. Battle, no, she lives up where I work.
But I'm talking about.
Oh.
Latonya.
Oh, Latonya. All the same. I'm just saying, we offered it to our current.
I think it's good to offer it.
Yeah.
And then if she says no, that's fine, we're not going to.
Yeah, she may not, she may not want it. Yeah.
I like the idea of at least offering it.
Same.
So we could just call Stacy tomorrow morning and say, hey, can we add this to the contract before you send it to her?
And would he have a copy of Dr. Battle's first contract?
He would, yeah.
To be able to pull that language from.
He, he pulled, he pulled Dr. Battle's contract.
The current one or the first one?
Oh, the first one.
He should still have the first one.
He would still have.
He would still have the first one.
Because the first one is the one, the second one doesn't reference it, the first one does.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll just email him. I can email him tonight before I go to bed.
Yeah, it was, the district will reimburse the superintendent in an amount not to exceed $6,000 for reasonable and necessary expenses incurred moving a residence located, moving to a residence located within the district's geographic boundaries, provided the move occurs before January. Right, January 1st. And the expenses are incurred before that date.
All right, well, I'll just tell, I'll just ask Stacy to put it in there if it's not in there.
And I'll send you a copy of the contract.
Okay.
So you've got it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
The $6,000 seem reasonable with inflation?
I have no idea.
Yeah, that was six years ago, six years ago.
Six years ago.
Well, Stacy would know. Yeah, yeah.
Exactly.
I'm thinking that too.
Move an apartment, first, that's what I was saying.
Could I hire a mover for that much?
And how far you're moving, I guess, and how much stuff you have.
I think it, I think it cost me more to move.
All right, so.
Just thinking of new development.
You got it.
It's going to be occurring in my.
All right, so we, every, every, are we good?
Ready to gavel us out of here?
All right. Yes, we've had a very, I believe, thoughtful process and I believe that we came to the, the decision very critically and thoughtfully and I, I think this board was very, I don't know, it's too late for me to talk right now. Just shut up.
Great job.
Yes. It all, everything worked out the way it was supposed to, so. My time is now 11:22 and having no further agenda items, I now call to adjourn this meeting of the Board of Education.